I'd like to call a meeting to order if we could, please. We're fortunate this evening to have Reverend Bobby Alger, Crossroads Community Church, will deliver our invocation. We appreciate you being with us, sir.
Can we stand together? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. God, we thank you for the various capacities that you place us in to serve you. And Lord, I thank you for the men and women that have chosen to serve in government here in Frederick County. Lord, we bless them. Father, your word says in Jeremiah that as we pray for the prosperity of our community, that we would prosper as well. And so I ask you, Father, to pray that you would lead and guide them, the decisions they have before them tonight and this year, that those decisions, that you would give them wisdom and direction, that they would glorify you and bless this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman Fisher, lead us in the pledge, please, sir. Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Adoption of the agenda, are there any changes?
No, sir.
Do you entertain a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Agenda is adopted as presented. Tentative items for consent are tabs A and F. Are there any changes?
No, sir.
How would the board like to handle this one?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
And the seconds, are there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then items A and F are approved under consent, as well as the minutes. This is a portion of the meeting we reserve for citizen comments on any agenda item that is not subject to a public hearing. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to share?
Still here.
Yes, sir, we have, we have one, Jay Martz, to speak to the budget and the Human Resources Committee.
Welcome, Ms. Martz.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman DeHaven, Board members and staff. I'm Jay Martz, a resident of the Gainesboro District. And first off, I'd like to thank Bob Hess for being my past supervisor. He did a great job, and I'm glad you're going to honor him tonight. I had the opportunity to attend the Budget Work Session meeting that was held on January 18th. It was good to hear discussion on how to tackle the current debt situation and the large amount of debt that will be incurred by future capital costs. It was refreshing to hear consideration to putting the brakes on some outside agency funding. However, there was almost no discussion, less time than you're going to allow me to speak tonight, on lowering the tax burden of citizens and businesses in this county. All the while, you make plans to spend the multimillion dollars in surplus that will be received by the real estate assessment and the tax increase that most of you voted for. Both the county and the school board are proposing salary increases, pay raises, and adding additional staff for their respective government employees. I believe this is bad policy in the face of tax increases. Our public servants deserve consideration for additional monetary benefits when the policies of the governing body are put in place that improve productivity and enhance our economic situation. I read the Human Resource Committee minutes that you're going to discuss tonight, and I found it interesting that they approved every single increase in personnel across all county divisions, all of them. I think this is a committee that has an objectivity problem. How often do they say no to increased government and staffing in the face of tax increases and higher burdens on tax to our county taxpayers? Thank you very much for allowing me to address the board.
Thank you, sir. The only one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Report of supervisors, comments, are there any? All right. So we'll move on to the really fun part, and ask Bob Hess to join us.
Resolution of appreciation for Supervisor Robert A. Hess, Gainesboro District, Frederick County, Virginia. Whereas Robert A. Hess served the citizens of Frederick County, Virginia, for over four years, his Gainesboro District Representative is Board of Supervisors. Whereas during his tenure, he held seats on numerous committees, including that of member and chairman of the Human Resources Committee, Code and Ordnance Committee, Technology Committee, the Sports Committee, Plan Commission Liaison for 2013 through 15, where he called the National Sports 2013 through 14, Northern Channondale Valley Regional Commission, Winchester Frederick County Tourism Board. Whereas, under Supervisor Hess's leadership as Chairman of the Human Resources Committee, the committee completed a revision to the county's Human Resources Policy Manual, completed and implemented a salary survey, and adopted a position allocation chart to assist in tracking existing and future positions. Whereas Supervisor Hess was a tireless worker for not only the constituents in his district, but for all the citizens of Frederick County. Whereas, this board will always consider Supervisor Hess a colleague and a friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks to Supervisor Robert A. Hess and wishes him all the best in his future endeavors. It further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon this accomplishment of this citizen legislator adopted the 14th day of December 2016.
I think we have a willingness to continue to serve. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we reappoint Mr. Odom to the Historic Resources Advisory Board.
Motion to reappoint, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries. Let's see, nothing for February, March Conservation Easement Authority. Doesn't look like we have a candidate. And it looks like we're looking for someone to serve Member-at-Large on Social Services. Does anyone have any thoughts on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I have a prospect, but I would certainly entertain if someone else has a person that they feel would be interested in doing this job. I would certainly like to have their name, so I may contact them also, since I'm liaison to that board.
Great. Any other thoughts? Okay, I think that brings us to the end of the list. Performance Agreement Resolution for American Woodmark. Who's reading this one? Mr. Barker, sir. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other Board of Supervisors member, you have in front of you is a performance agreement for the American Woodmark Project. I'm obviously happy to entertain any questions that relate to it. The document is what you all talked about several months back. It has been reviewed by both the county attorney, the EDA attorney, general counsel inside VDDP, as well as the Attorney General for the state. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions if there are any, sir.
Questions for Mr. Barker, anyone? Well, you thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the approval of the Performance Agreement for American Woodmark Corporation as presented and information given to us previously.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. All right, that will bring us to the Human Resources Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The HR Committee met at 8:00 AM Friday, January 20th. We have one item requires action. I'll present it. It was a request for new positions to be placed on the position allocation chart, understanding that this is not appropriating funds for the position, it's just placing them on the allocation chart. I might say that the committee voted unanimously for approval of all of the positions to be placed on the chart. One was in the Recreation Department for a Recreation Technician, two are in the Treasurer's Office for two cashiers, account analysts. One was in Public Works for an Inspector. One was in Social Services for a Secretary, two. And 17 of them are in the Fire Department, 11 being firefighters, two training officers, one Assistant Fire Marshal, one Q&amp;A manager, one EMS supervisor, and one EMS billing specialist. I can handle these individually if the board would so desire. If there's no objection, I'd just make a motion that the recommendation of the HR Committee be approved.
All right, well, let's try that one. We have a motion to approve the action of the recommendation of the committee. Does anyone have concerns about, would like to split it up, or how would the board like to handle the request?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we vote on the items requiring the board action for the Human Resources staff for the fiscal year 2017 as a group, and I would so move.
I think that would be a second, because I think that was Mr. Ewing's motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, he had already made the motion, and then I would second Mr.-
Comfortable with that one?
I am comfortable with that one.
We okay, Rod?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So is there discussion, anyone? Yes, sir. Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, I do have some concern. It appears that, to me, under bullet E, that we have predetermined the outcome of a report that we have not even started yet on the Fire Department operations. And I understand that these are allocations, an exercise in allocation, not in funding. But I'm questioning the wisdom of allocating these positions when we don't have the result of the study being done on the Fire Department, and therefore, I think it's premature to allocate these positions without that. So I will not be voting for this.
Okay. Further discussion? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I have Mr. Lofton's same concerns about this. It's not that I don't think we don't need folks, we do. I'm just, I'm a little uneasy with anybody thinks this is any kind of approval of these positions, per se, and I think there's some details yet to be worked out. So, you know, 17 new positions, we probably do, if you look long range. I'm not sure when that'll be implemented. It's almost like a capital projects plan. You know, you've got all these projects that you've got down the road coming. That's kind of what this list is to me. And I guess if somebody could help me that I'm looking at this maybe from this standpoint, that this is sort of like a capital list, it's not approving or appropriating anything, but it gives you an idea of where we're going to go in these various departments. So if I'm looking at it wrong, I'd just like some help, because this is in no way appropriating any monies or approving the-
No, you would do that separately on a case-by-case basis. Now, I think the justification was that we'd have enough people in stations to respond to calls without having to go third, fourth, fifth-
Exactly.
Fifth responders, and it was actually part of their budget request to fill all those positions this year. I don't think we're going to get there.
I'm pretty sure-
I'm not trying to sway one way or another, but I think that is where we were. Supervisor Ewing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add that the committee was looking long range. They weren't looking at this year so much as future planning. And by putting them on the allocation list, it gives you an idea of what you're going to be anticipating in the future, rather than the immediate appropriations to support the positions. And I think that's where they were coming from.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Supervisor Dunn?
I'm probably going to align myself with Mr. Lofton's comments. I respect Mr. Ewing's comments, but I might for this year, just want to see what is necessary for this year. We're going through a budget, we're going through a budget process, and I just have some reservations.
Thank you, sir.
Could I make a comment?
Please.
Just to clarify, when you approve the position allocation chart, you're, you're actually endorsing the need for the positions at the point when we can afford to fund them. So Fire and Rescue currently has 13 positions already approved in a prior year. So the 17 we'd be adding on to that. So two things you could do. One is approve the chart without the Fire and Rescue increase, and just leave that one on hold until you get the Fire and Rescue study back. Or you could approve it with the understanding that you can go back and change it later if the Fire and Rescue study would indicate we don't need as many positions as the chart says. Because it's, you know, if you add them, you can take them away. So those are just two things you might consider.
Thank you.
I guess-
Supervisor Slaughter?
One of the concerns I had was the EMS billing specialist, and I'm wondering if that isn't something that at some point we might look at a contracted services versus an in-house position, and also an EMS supervisor. I kind of looked at the descriptions for those as well, and I'm, I'm kind of aligning myself, too, with Supervisor Lofton's comments in that maybe it is a little premature to add these positions without a complete understanding of where we might end up. And I realize that we're looking at staffing at the stations for additional people, and I don't know whether the 13 that Mrs. Garten referred to would get us to the extra shifts we're requiring staffing. No?
It won't.
It will not.
It would not.
Okay. My, my concerns were the billing specialist and the EMS supervisor. After reading the job descriptions, I'm not sure whether we'd want to take that on as a contractual type service as opposed to having a actual individual filling that role. So that was really the only issue I had.
I think we have an individual filling that role today. I think that the workload has gotten to the point where they don't feel like one person can handle that and everything else we're being asked to do as well. At least they're similar titles or combined titles, but doing that work. So, further discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. The position allocation chart is nothing more than a working document, which can be changed at any time. So it's not a bible that we're going to live by. It's a working document.
Yes, sir.
If I make one more comment to address the administrative, county administrators' comments about you can add them and you can subtract them, I don't recall in recent history that we've ever subtracted anything. And that's my concern, is once it's on there, it almost becomes biblical, and I don't know that we've ever taken the time to review and say, "We have these allocated, but we're not sure that that's still valid." So I still, for the points that I've made, I can't support the request.
Okay. Comments, anyone?
We just started this chart last year, so you've, you've only had it in existence for a couple of years. So it's a new thing. But, but I would say, in all honesty, if you don't feel comfortable putting them on there, don't put them on there.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if the second would agree to it, I'll change my motion to approve A through D as a separate motion, and then we'll make a motion on item E.
Second concur?
Second concurs.
All right. On the amended motion?
One comment, Mr. Chairman. I'm assuming that these people are going to work 40 hours a week, is that correct?
Sorry, do what?
That these employees will work 40 hours a week?
They'll be full-time, proposed to be full-time. Now, it's only an allocation chart. It hires and authorizes no one.
So for instance, the rec tech that's being asked for here, we would look at that as an appropriation in the Finance Committee before it would move forward, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Or in the budget.
Okay.
Further discussion, anyone? We ready to vote? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a, since the HR Committee approved item E, I'll make a motion that we approve item E, Fire Department request.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Discussion. Item E only, Fire and Rescue's request.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with Mr. Lofton. I think with where we are with this, I'm not going to disagree that we don't need positions, but how we pick what we're, where we go with it, I don't want to, this might set some arbitrary categorization of where we think folks are going. I think we need to wait for this Fire and Rescue study to come back and it's, get that input before we do this. You know, this has, it looks like something, and we probably won't end up there, so let's don't even look like it until we get this study. That would be my preference.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may add to that, I don't know that it will, but it seems it has the potential to prejudice the outcome of the report, and I'd rather not see that bias even tacitly interjected into that study before it's done.
Other comments?
If we are looking at our current year or our next year budget, and it is decided that we would need or we would want to fund additional staffing on the various shifts, then we would have to come back and change the numbers on our allocation. So I guess I'm wondering if it isn't possible if we could add the firefighters, at least?
Anything's possible, that's why we're having the discussion. So, other comments, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, if it, if it were tabled, what happens?
Were you voted up or down? Send it back to HR? Any of the above?
I'll just make a motion that we table number E.
We have a motion on the floor.
Sorry.
He could amend it, couldn't he?
He could do that. Rather we not go backwards that way.
That's fine. That's fine.
Any further discussion? The justification was it takes a group of six in order to, to man 24 hours at one station. And so the request was for groups of six. So, any further discussion, anywhere? The motion in the second is to adopt tab E as recommended by the HR Committee. Supervisor Slaughter? Won't we start at the other end?
No, I'm sure the outcome is going to be the same. I, I guess I'm a little hesitant, but, but I think, again, it's a working document, and so I, I will vote for it.
That's done, aye, Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Can amend this at any time. Thank you, the board for their consideration.
Mr. Chairman, that completes my report. Everything else is information only.
Thank you, sir. All right, Transportation Committee report. Supervisor Lofton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Transportation Committee met on January 23rd, 2017, at the County Office Building to review items. Before them, they had one item that required action, but we also had some other support information given to us on ongoing projects that are included in your packet. If you have any questions, Mr. Bishop, I'm sure will be happy to answer those. But the item requiring action is support for Reliance Road Truck Restriction. At our November meeting of the Transportation Committee, the committee considered a request from Warren County to seek a joint truck restriction on Reliance Road. At that time, the committee had a number of questions regarding the request, which proposed to the Warren County Administrator, and they're attached in your documentation, also finding there communications from VDOT recording regarding the potential truck restriction. If I can bring you up to speed, the Warren County was concerned, because several citizens had called in to complain about the tractors and trailers that were traversing that particular section of roadway. Now, if you are familiar with Reliance Road, once you get into Warren County, the road becomes narrower, has a lot more hills and curves in it, which makes it really unsuitable for tractors and trailers. Once you're in Frederick County, the road is much wider, much better alignment, and so we don't have that particular problem with those large tractors and trailers that might be in conflict with other drivers on the roadway. So after all the questions have been answered by the county administrator and VDOT, we found that we, they could not ask for a truck restriction on just their portion, since it was a through roadway, Frederick County would have to also enter into that particular request. So with all our questions answered, and the information from the Warren County Administrator and VDOT, the committee has recommended that the Board of Supervisors schedule a public hearing and adopt a resolution of support for the restriction of tractors and trailers on Reliance Road, and I would move to do so.
So we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Discussion. Anyone? No one? All right. Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion is unanimously adopted. Anything else?
That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. All right, Public Works Committee was adopted under consent. Board Liaison reports, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Fisher?
I'd like to go over some things that were discussed and done at the Airport Authority meeting last Thursday, February 2nd. I think everybody's aware that the Airport Authority had entered into a planning for a strategic plan for the airport to go along with its master plan, and also to look at ways maybe to make things economically more viable. We had a presentation by our consulting engineering firm on a draft of a strategic plan, and this was done in a closed session. Mr. Tibbs was representing the county, and Mrs. Freeman, city manager, was representing the city, and both were invited into the closed session. And the main reason for that, and permitted under state code, was due to proprietary information and trade secret information. The consultant had gathered a lot of information from area of businesses, and that's kind of confidential. But the consulting engineer has made a couple of suggestions for better marketing of the airport and its services. The city is going through some additional gyrations on funding, so they have requested a session with our consultant at the airport, which will have to be in the form of a closed session to city council. What I wanted to put at, in front of the Board of Supervisors, would the board, which has been much more supportive, I think, from an economic development, so the airport, would this board like to have a session with the consultant engineering firm? And I don't need an answer right now, but they're going to try to do something fairly quick with the city due to their decisions they need to make on funding. But if this board would like to, we can make arrangements for the consulting engineer to make a presentation, but it will have to be under a closed session due to the proprietary information. The other thing that's- The other thing that's going on with the capital plan, on the 16th, we have another meeting on the 16th of this month with Delta Engineering. Again, a consulting engineering firm that actually we, the airport uses for design purposes, and they've had preliminary discussion with airport staff. I met with them as chairman, and they have put out a lot of information. I think some of you were invited, some of you, I think, maybe did that --
Survey.
Survey that they sent out. Again, the needs for a new terminal building. It has to fit in with the master plan, with the runway being brought up to standards like it was a couple of years ago. New FAA requirements, the taxiway will have to be moved, then the apron's going to be too close. And the terminal building is one of those buildings that was built 20-some years ago. Life cycle for that nice drive-and-finish is about 20 years. It's not in very good shape, but it does need to be relocated long-term. So I just thought I would give you an update that we're moving along with those things. Of course, a lot of these things are funded significantly by the FAA and the Virginia Department of Aviation. And the Virginia Department of Aviation is involved with this design of this terminal building. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so let's try and see if we can get an expression at this point. Are there members of the board that think it would be beneficial to meet with their consultant and the airport board? Yes, sir.
I certainly entertain that meeting. I'd like to learn more about what's going on out there and what projected for the future.
Okay. I see a lot of heads nodding in the same direction. So the first thought I would have is that, can we do a combined meeting? And this is one that our council would have to advise us on. Can we do a closed session with both jurisdictions? And seems more efficient. Can't hurt for us all around the table. So we'll think about that one.
Big good idea for good.
But one way or another, we'll set that up, make the arrangements, either jointly or separately. That works for everyone.
Might be a good idea, Mr. Chairman, to save the authority. I'm sure these aren't --
They don't come for fun.
Well, they don't come free either, so.
Right. Yeah. Channels of communication could be beneficial as well.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So thank you, sir. Any other board liaison reports? Anyone? All right. Seeing none, this is a portion of the board that we set aside for citizen comment on any issue. Would anyone like to share with the board? Anyone at all? Mr. Marks?
Well, I was actually hoping someone would beat me to the punch here. But I'm Jay Marks from the Gainsborough District. Thanks for letting me speak again. You know, we now have a new Secretary of Education in Washington, DC, Betsy DeVos, an advocate for parental rights and school choice. And our Virginia General Assembly continues to move forward on legislation such as education savings account in virtual high schools. The last few days in January are always celebrated as National School Choice Week, a great time to see the many, many opportunities that are available for parents to exercise the right to send their children to the school of their choice, charter, private, parochial, or government. It should always be a choice with limited, with little financial consequences. The public debate on education facilities here in Frederick County continues to roar. There's enormous amount of potential high spending, debt, and tax increases proposed by the government bureaucracy. It is worth a closer look at our local private sector schools, their facilities, and tuition prices in comparison to the government costs. Our county school board is asking the community to spend another $123 million for new school construction after we have just expended $50 million on a new middle school. Their cost per student goes up almost every year and is approaching $12,000, almost double that in the private sector. We need to arrest the appetite of our current school board and their lust for new construction. Our focus should be on renovation and additions to our existing facilities. We have already invested multi-millions of dollars in taxpayer, multi-millions of taxpayer dollars in buildings. We have many schools that need attention and should be improved before we expend funds on new schools. Our elected school board representatives should make the tough decisions to adjust school boundaries before plunging parents and taxpayers into more debt. I encourage you to promote renovation and reconstruction and additions to our existing schools and facilities that will help all of the students in our county instead of new construction for just the few. As an example, you only have to look at the abandoned Frederick County Middle School over on Linden Drive that sits empty and vacant, as many in our county decry overcrowding that exists in our facilities. I went over there the other day and peeked in the windows. What I saw was desks, tables, and chairs, TVs, audiovisual equipment, blackboards, whiteboards, smart boards. In the cafeteria, industrial-sized cooking equipment, pots and pans sitting on the table. In the shop class, there were tools and large tables for construction. I went around the back to look at the sporting equipment, which there was quite a few out there, and I saw eight modular classrooms, which surprised me, as I just saw the other day that Loudoun County is getting ready to buy eight modular classrooms. So we have our 12 modular classrooms, while we have eight out here sitting and falling apart. We need to do something to make sure that the school board has the taxpayer, the taxpayers' resolve in mind. So what I'd like to finish up and just say is, oh, my time is up, that it is time for us to look at this renovation hard. We do not need to spend all this new money on new construction. Please go out there and look at the Frederick County Middle School and see the waste of taxpayer dollars that are sitting in that vacant facility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone at all? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Brandy Hammond from the Shawnee District. Good evening. I hadn't actually prepared to speak tonight, but in response to the previous speaker, we've all, we've already determined that renovating or adding on will actually cost more than new construction, at least as the high school is concerned. And the 12th elementary school, there are renovations being planned for Armel. That seemed feasible to do. My question for you, and whether you want to respond tonight or in writing, or I'm happy to meet with anyone, is I keep hearing a lot about concerns about the expense, especially of the new high school, and I keep hearing comments about bells and whistles, some people even referring back to Frederick County Middle School. I didn't see any bells and whistles at Frederick County Middle School. Actually, I saw areas where I wish we'd spent more money. I would love to take a tour with any of you to Frederick County Middle School, so you could point out the bells and whistles. And I went to the informational meeting on the new schools, and during those presentations, where many people asked questions, seeing the plans, still didn't see the bells and whistles. So I would understand that concern. I just need to know what the bells and whistles are and the extra expenses are that you all keep, not all of you, but some of you keep referring to. So if you could please let me know what the extra extravagant expenses and bells and whistles are, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If anyone has information they'd like to share, if you would leave your contact information with Mr. Tibbs? Anyone else like to address the board on any issue at all? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've received a letter from three James Wood High School students, Maddie Bean, Gus Bardos, and Alicia Dodd. They are part of the James Wood High School chapter of Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, and they have a positive project in our community. And they're going to be collecting supplies for the homeless families, especially those with newborn children. And they're going to be doing this at the Dollar Tree located by Martin's on 522 North on February the 11th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I have a list of things they're collecting, certainly if you're interested, you can see that. But I would ask that our community and the folks here in the room support these young folks as they reach out to our community in a positive manner. And I think they are to be congratulated for doing that.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that with us. Any other comments? Anyone? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, myself and Supervisor Wells were able to attend the Middletown Fire and Rescue Awards banquet Saturday evening, and I enjoy going to those. It really gives you a feel for the still strong volunteerism in our community, and I think we need to applaud that. But beyond that, they also recognized a gentleman there who has been the chief for 53 years. And I just think that's outstanding, that someone in the community has that much dedication, that much love for their community, that they would stay in that position for 53 years. I would like to commend ex-chief Henry Shiley for his service to the Middletown and Frederick County community. Wish him all the best in his retirement, although I'm sure he will still be at the fire station every day. And just like to, again, commend him and all the volunteers in our fire and rescue service for all that they do, but I thought that was a milestone that probably is rarely ever reached and should be recognized.
All my known life, he's been there. Well done. Other comments? Anyone? Page Chairman Fisher?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Page to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no, we'll stand adjourned. We thank you all for joining us and sharing your comments.